I want to lead this to the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, a moment of silence, we see what's going on here in the world. Shootings again, and what's this world coming to us? So I would just ask that everybody in their own way pray that we can have some kind of semblance of peace on earth here in this world. Thank you.
Also, I'd like a condolence for Ms. Hobbs, Cookie Hobbs, who lived on Conkey Street, who passed away, and they're having a memorial next month for her in East Chicago. She was a supporter of mine and very active in the community, and she will be missed by the entire 3rd District in the City of Hammond.
And also, I would like to remember that eighteen years ago on Wednesday, two thousand nine hundred seventy-seven lives were lost and martyrs were born, and heroes did what no one thought possible. Let us never forget September eleventh.
Roll call. Clerk Golick.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Markovich.
Here, reading the minutes, approval of claims, Councilman Warple.
Mr. President, make a motion to accept the minutes from August twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, be placed on file, please.
Second.
By Councilman Spatelli, place the minutes on file, second by Councilman Emerson.
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed ayes, have it. Now approval of claims, Councilman Warple.
I'd like, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the claims as submitted, beginning with claims dated eight twenty-nine nineteen and ending with claims dated nine four nineteen. Claim fourteen, or forty-eight seventeen through fifty seventy-one inclusive, in the amount of seven million eight hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and six dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
Most by Councilman Warple, second by Councilwoman Vanez. Approval of claims is submitted. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Claims pass, eight in favor, one absent. Public hearings, we have none. Communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
An announcement that hugs, third annual Mexican Independence Day Parade will be held Saturday, September twenty-first at noon. The route starts at Morton High School and goes down Grand to One Hundred and Sixty-Fifth, west to Kennedy, and south back to Hessville Park. Mariachi Festival will follow until six P.M.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Just a question for Councilman Rakels, is that starting time eleven or twelve?
It's twelve, the parade starts at twelve.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to take the time to read the letter that came from the mayor of the City of Hammond, Thompson McDermott Jr., and it says, "Councilman Markovich, the Hammond City Council has scheduled the introduction of the public hearing of Mayor's twenty-twenty budget proposal for Monday, October seventh. The Indiana law requires the controller to publish the notice to taxpayers for the purpose of twenty-twenty budget. Next, tax levies and public hearings date to the Indiana Gateway ten days prior to the public hearing, which makes the deadline to publish September twenty-seventh. This is identified as the proposal, proposed budget on the Gateway forms. The council will vote to adopt the mayor's budget as proposed and may make reductions to the budget during the adoption meeting on Monday, October twenty-first. The controller has submitted the adopted budget within two days of adoption. The controller is currently meeting with all departments to prepare Form One and reduce budgets wherever possible. We continue to meet regular to discuss ways to reduce spending and generate additional revenue to cover the additional five million in tax cap losses we are projecting for twenty-twenty. We are working towards creative solutions to allow us to manage this surefall within depending on gaming dollars alone. Given the difficulty of the task and untimely State Board of Accounts audit, the Mayor's twenty-twenty budget proposal to the council will not be completed until publication date of September twenty-seventh. In order to present you with the most accurate budget for your consideration, we request you do not hold the voluntary Saturday Department Budget Meeting until after the date. Sincerely, Thompson McDermott, Mayor of the City of Hammond."
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Yes, also on September twenty-first, from twelve to four, HC Three will be holding a Hanson Building Open House fundraiser. The group will offer an in-progress look at the transformation underway at the former library, the Hanson Bradshaw Library, soon to become a community education center and veterans museum. Again, that's Saturday, September twenty-first, from twelve to four, at the Hanson Building, Alabama and Martha.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
We can be census takers, apply online at twenty-twentycensus.gov/jobs. Twenty-twenty Census Jobs provide great pay, flexible hours, weekly pay, paid training. For more information to help applying, please call one eight-five-five-Jobs-twenty-twenty.
I would submit that letter dated September fifth to all council persons and Heather Gray, City Controller, from Councilman Markovich. Twenty-nineteen past city council budget, which is attached, and a proposed city council budget. I'm mentioning it now here under committee reports, but we'll also take it up on our new and unfinished business, and closes the city council twenty-nineteen published and adopted budget. I would recommend that the twenty-twenty budget stay the same as the twenty-nineteen budget, attached. The only exceptions for any adjustments that have to be made for any salary increases proposed by the mayor, all categories and line items remain the same and increased accordingly. Any questions, additions, or recommendations, please submit in writing for all council members to review. All council members receive a copy of this letter with a proposed, well, with the past twenty-nineteen budget, which is being proposed for twenty-twenty. Letter was sent to Mayor McDermott, Counselor Berger, and Heather Gray.
Attorney Berger, correction.
Counselor, same thing as attorney.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
In regards to just addressing my concern, although I did not win the primaries, so it said, however, I feel it's very important that my colleagues have two secretaries in the office. There's a lot of work, and especially if you're actively involved in the city and in the community in doing such things as addressing the needs of the citizens of this great city. One secretary cannot do the job alone. So I would hope that somehow or another that you all come up with a creative idea, just like you did to pursue her to become a full-time employee here as a secretary, to get her some assistance as your secretary, because if she gets sick, there's no way in the world you all can call in and get your things done, or get things addressed, and get to the department heads and whatnot. So it's very important that you have more than just one secretary in your office. And that's all I have to say about it. I would hope that you all come up with a creative idea of making that happen, because I certainly would not want to be in the capacity as a councilman and not have two secretaries. But, however, I will be active in the community.
Any other communications? Again, I will take this up on our new and unfinished business. We received a letter dated September fifth from the City Controller about dates and times for the proposed budget hearings, meetings with department heads. I will bring that up on our new and unfinished business. Any other communications? Committee reports.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
At this time, I would like to read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Coming up on Friday, September twentieth, Community Watch at Silver Birch, that will begin at two P.M. Tuesday, September seventeenth, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center, beginning at six thirty P.M. Wednesday, September eleventh, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, beginning at six thirty P.M. Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet at the Golden Manor Senior Apartment Building on the corner of One Hundred and Seventy-Fifth and Columbia, that will be at one P.M. On Thursday, September nineteenth, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Jean Shepherd Center, beginning at seven P.M. The South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September nineteenth, at the Hammond Housing Authority Building, that will begin at seven P.M. And the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September twelfth, at Calumet College, beginning at six thirty P.M. I urge everyone to come out to one of these meetings. You don't have to be from that particular neighborhood to attend the meeting. Your question or concern will be able to be addressed by anyone who isn't in attendance at any of those meetings. So we look forward to seeing you there, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports closed. Ordinances, third, for final passage, we have none. Introductions of ordinances, we have none. Resolutions, none. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'd like to bring out Resolution nineteen R twenty-three. It is the reappointment of Raymondo Garcia to the Lake County Convention Visitors Bureau. And I would like to have the city clerk read it in its entirety, please, the resolution.
I believe you have to suspend the rules first.
Has to be a motion made.
Motion to suspend the rules, to make adjustments to the budget, I'm sorry, to the agenda.
To add anything to the agenda, point of order.
And I refer to Attorney Berger.
Right, there's a, by ordinance, there's a five-day rule, and if it's not submitted and given with the packet to all the councilmen.
Can be voted on.
It requires the council for a two-thirds vote to suspend the rule and let it be introduced.
Okay, so I guess I make a motion to bring out the Resolution nineteen R twenty-three.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
You have to make a motion to suspend the rules, and then you have to, Councilman Torres, come back and then make the motion for what you're trying to.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
By Councilman Torres to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs to suspend the rules. Now, I'm not going to do a roll call till everybody is sitting in here. We had a couple people walk out, so if we need to take a recess here, we'll wait till Councilwoman Vanez shows up and Councilman Higgs comes back, so we can have a full council here for this suspension of the rules.
Is that, is that works?
First, I see that.
We got one coming back.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Attorney Berger just stated to you, you only need two-thirds vote, so, I mean, one person missing from the council floor is not going to make a difference, but if you want to sit here and waste your time on something so petty, that's totally up to you.
I'm not wasting anybody's time that's so petty, I just think something that's important and all the discussion in the press, that we need to have a full council here to vote on something like that.
Well, I call for the vote. Second.
Most by Councilman, Warple, second by Councilman Higgs to call for the vote. Roll call.
This is for call for the vote?
Yeah, just to call for the vote, roll call.
No, uh.
This is suspend the rules.
Be able to bring out the resolution.
Right, that's all we're doing.
It's to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules?
Yes.
That's right. Seriously.
Call for the vote, Clerk Golick, please.
Spatelli.
Do we have a new president?
No, I'm not.
Hey, let's. City Clerk vote, clarification on the vote being taken, please.
I'm not sure myself.
It's to suspend the rules.
The only one I have down here, Mr. President, is the motion to suspend the rules, Councilman Markovich.
Councilman Warple, second, by Councilman Higgs made a motion to call for the vote to suspend the rules, correct?
We're voting on the suspension of the rules.
Correct, that's what I just said.
You don't have to vote on calling for the vote.
No, you don't have to vote on the call for the vote.
Okay. So it's under suspension of rules, correct, President Markovich?
Yes, City Clerk.
Okay. Ready?
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez. Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes. Eight in favor, one absent, to suspend the rules. Councilman Torres.
Mr. President, I would like to bring out Resolution nineteen R twenty-three. It's a resolution to reappoint Raymondo Garcia to the Lake County Convention Visitors Bureau. The city clerk, please read the entire.
Point of order.
State your point of order, Councilman Higgs.
Councilman Mark, Councilman Torres, there has to be a second, and then the clerk can move forward with reading.
Most by Councilman Torres to bring out nineteen R dash twenty-three.
Second, and I could be the president.
City Clerk Golick, can you please?
The clerk doesn't have a copy of the resolution.
Do I have to call for?
Hand him the copy, so he can read the resolution.
Okay.
A resolution sponsored by Councilman Torres. A resolution to reappoint Raymondo Garcia to the Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Whereas Raymondo Garcia has demonstrated his qualifications for and his interests in serving as a member of the Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau, one of whose members is appointed by the common council, and whereas there is now a vacancy for the remainder of a three-year term expiring July first, two thousand twenty-two. Therefore, bid resolved by the common council of the City of Hammond that Raymondo Garcia is hereby reappointed by the common council to serve as a member of the Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau for the remainder of the term of three years, commencing immediately and terminating July first, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there any discussion? Councilman Torres.
Yeah, Mr. Garcia has served on this board for the last seven years. He's a community activist, he has served honorably in that Visitors Bureau, and this is just a reappointment. He deserves to be reappointed, he talked to us during caucus, and he wants to continue serving. So I ask my colleagues to please reappoint him to the Lake County Convention Visitors Bureau for the next three years. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Call for the vote.
Any other discussion? Roll, roll call.
Spatelli.
No.
Vanez.
No.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Warple.
No.
Rakels.
No.
Markovich.
Yes. Motion fails, five against, four in favor.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Make a motion to appoint Bernie Grizziola to the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority as the Hammond City Council Representative.
Most by Councilman Rakels.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spatelli to appoint Mr. Bernard Grizziola for the city council's appointment to the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Is that gentleman in the audience this evening? I'm not totally familiar, I don't have dog in this race, but, I mean, it's fine with me whoever you want to appoint, but I just was wondering if he was here. It seems to me if you were interested in being appointed to a position, you would make yourself available and at least show up, but who am I? Of course, I was sanctioned at a council meeting, so, you know, anything could happen.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
No.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Markovich.
Yes, motion passes, eight in favor, one against. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I would like to congratulate, what's his name, Clerk Golick, if you can pronounce his name again? The appointee?
I'm sorry, I don't have the name before me.
Oh, my God.
Bernard Grizziola.
Oh, congratulations, Bernard, I hope you do a wonderful job in your capacity of serving on the Tourism and Visitors Bureau.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business, just for anybody that wish to speak before the council, we have a sign-in sheet, if you want to go ahead and sign in, if you have any questions you want to ask or issues you want to bring up before the council, you can sign in. We have a three-minute limit.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Still in.
New and unfinished business.
Thank you. I want to bring out the twenty-nineteen Outstanding Nonprofit Lawyer Award recipients announced by the ABA as it celebrates outstanding nonprofit lawyers. And that's the American Bar Association nationally, and one of our very own, Laura Kalwinski, received the Outstanding In-House Counsel Award for distinguished service by a nonprofit in-house counsel. Laura Kalwinski with the Zacat Foundation of America. Laura is general counsel at Zacat Foundation of America, an organization that engages in domestic and international grant-making. She navigates nonprofit tax and operational issues, including complexities associated with navigating the global transfer of grant funds in destabilized regions and among marginalized populations. Ms. Kalwinski previously served as senior counsel, policy and compliance, and the executive director of national standards for the council on foundations. She led the council on foundations work on behalf of member foundations with congressional committee staff, state and federal regulators, and peer philanthropic organizations. Ms. Kalwinski trained thousands of foundation staff at conferences, presented to international, federal, and state government officials, and published numerous articles about foundation governance and international grant-making. Her career includes two years in India, conducting research for the Indiana University Center for Constitutional Design in Liberia, and being invited to train foundation staff throughout Japan. Ms. Kalwinski is on the executive committee for the Charity and Security Network, led by Kay Ghanene, and she has represented their work in The Hague, at the World Bank, and at the U.N. in Vienna. She is a Lilly Endowment Community Scholar and has received the Indiana Governor's Award for Tomorrow's Leaders. Ms. Kalwinski proudly works with this year's outstanding young lawyer award recipient on U.S. tax-exempt organizations' access to financial services, one of Hammond's very own, and a proud father congratulating his daughter. Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilman, to you and your wife.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
We got a thanks for calling, for Dan, Janet, and Anthony for their kind donations to Venice Free, our veterans and active military personnel, along with your guests, to honor them in their services. I have attached the flyer that both of you and the council members can pass our regard in this luncheon. This is only open to veterans and active military personnel and their guests, and they must make a reservation by calling at two one nine five four five one two oh seven. Thank you for everything. Kathy.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Before we go into public expression, I just wanted to certainly say this in regards to, I know there are a number of parks that being done within the City of Hammond, and one of the parks that interests me is Memorial Park, and it needs some repairs and some work to be done, so I would hope that hopefully the personnel in the park department can get it done, or maybe the community can get actively involved and maybe approach them as well and address the concerns of that park as well, because it does need some desperate repairs work, so.
Any other new and unfinished business? Like I stated earlier, letter September fifth, Heather Gray, the City Controller, about the city council's proposed, is Heather here?
She's not present.
We had discussion in the caucus about the city council's budget. I've asked her to be here, she's not here, but per my letter, and I sent it out to all of you council persons, you know, about the budget, that the twenty-twenty budget would be the same as the twenty-nineteen budget, all items, line items and that be included, except for what has to be done as far as two percent raises for PERF, FICA, and so forth and that. We received a letter from the City Controller today in our packet, and she's got a budget proposal, and there's also something in there as far as changes that were made, when several of us councilmen don't know when those changes were made, or excluded, or cut. I showed her and told her in our caucus, we all know about it, I submitted the budget. If any of you want to make changes to it, submit it in writing. The proposed budget, she has what it is, that I'm asking for the city council, I don't know why she's not here, Phil, do you know why she's not here?
Heather is working on the State Board Exit Conference, which is scheduled for Wednesday, so she's got a number of State Board items that she's working on right now, which is why she came to caucus, to try and, you know, work through any of the issues, or dates, or questions, or concerns that you had.
I just want to relate to you, as stated in the caucus, we have a twenty-nineteen budget that was not cut. Somehow, a new budget appeared, asked her agreement, and so forth and that, and several of us councilmen have no idea what she or certain council persons are talking about. So I'm telling it to you here, for the record, you know, that our budget has remained the same as twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen's budget's going to be the same as twenty-twenty, what the exchanges have to be, what our second secretary, PERF, FICA, raises, and so forth and all of that. If any of these councilmen want to make changes to what I propose?
Mr. President.
Submit it in writing, submit it in writing, but I'm telling you, and here for the public record, we are, I am submitting the city council's budget for twenty-twenty. It was submitted to the mayor, Councilman Berger, and Heather Gray, the City Controller.
Mr. President.
They gave us some papers here proposed, basically that's what I'm doing here. And wherever these reductions were made, I like to see it in writing, where those reductions were made, when, and where, and how.
Mr. President.
Let me finish, please.
Well, by right, Councilman Markovich, you're supposed to relinquish your chair and give it to the.
I don't have to relinquish my chair when I'm supporting information for the city council. Now, if somebody wants me to step down and they want to take over as president, you're welcome to, but I'm just trying to protect this council and see what's going on here, because we have a budget. For the last few years, we were never given a copy of a budget that was presented to us, and that was it. I'm telling you guys ahead of time and for the public what the city council's budget's being recommended. If somebody wants to change it, then put it in writing. I was told by Heather, if I wanted anything, to put it in writing. I put it in writing and she's got it, okay? Now, a letter was also sent about scheduling department head meetings for September 21st. Now I'm being told that they don't want to have department head meetings. So I'm saying here for her letter of September 5th that we are going to have department head meetings on September 21st, on a Saturday, okay? Now, if that wants to be changed, then submit it in writing what has to be changed. But from what I understand, the proposed budget that's going to be submitted is going to be before the department head budgets are, okay? Unless we have the meeting on September 21st. If we have that meeting, fine. She's saying it's not required, they don't have to have it, that's fine. But I'm letting them know that I submitted our budget, and that's what I'm requesting for this council, again. If any council member does not agree with that budget, submit your questions in writing.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just for clarity, I mean, the only concern I have about the budget is the fact of making sure that Susan has enough help in the office. Other than that, it doesn't faze me one iota, because I've worked tirelessly for this city and for the community, and I feel as though whatever's going to happen is going to happen. You can sit here and go back and forth and discuss it all you want, but the reality of it is, you know as well as I know, these things have been going on for quite some time. You put what you want to put in the budget, you submit the budget, and be done with it. There's no need to go back and forth. If you have a scheduled time for us to meet, then submit the times and have everybody come and address your concerns. Other than, other than that, Councilman Markovich, you're just spinning your wheels. The times is not even here. Where are they? I haven't seen them and God knows when. They quit to make accusations and publicize different things that are not true. It's very offensive.
Mr. President.
Who's speaking? Oh, Councilman Warpo.
I think your point's taken. You're submitting a budget. I mean, it doesn't matter. Now we're submitting the 2020 budget. We don't need to argue about the 2019 budget. We're submitting the 2020 budget, and you've got a proposal.
She submitted the proposal with zero odd items, and I'm not agreeing to that. She has our.
And I've seen what you've submitted back, I mean, minus the fact that you don't add in where you want to raise it, but I see what you submitted back. You want it the same, except where changes apply, but you've submitted a proposal.
Our budget that was passed for 2019.
Mr. President.
No, no, I'm just saying, it doesn't matter what 2019 is. We're working on the 2020 budget.
Mr. President.
We're still under the 2019 budget, though, that was never changed, but somehow, some kind of piece of paperwork all of a sudden appeared with per-agreement. Several councilmen don't know where that per-agreement came from, so I'm just.
I certainly don't. Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
My other concern is that we have some people within our community serving on three and four boards. I think that should stop. And one, and I have no problem with making it public, so make sure you guys correctly put it out there. Ann Hubbard should not be serving on three and four boards. It's not fair to the citizens of this great city.
President Markovich. So you could submit the budget that the council is proposing to Heather Gray?
I've done that already, by September 5th letter.
Okay, fair enough. So, but the only other point I want to make is, well, two points. One, as we all know, I think every council person is aware that because of the law change for St. Joe and Lake County, exempt debt will no longer be exempt, which means we're going to approximately lose, it's being projected, we're going to lose as a city of around $5 million. So all the changes that I think you're going to be seeing in the very near future are going to be reductions for the most part. So, but in answer to your question about the department head meeting, the budget will not be completed until very close till September 27th. If you try and schedule a department head meeting, say on September 21st, the budget will not be completed. You'll be speaking to folks like myself and other department heads that will not have any clear answers for you at that time. That's why Heather Gray is suggesting that the department head meeting is after September 27th, so that we will actually have a budget that's been proposed, and the council then has their opportunity to make changes at that point, and that's when the department head meeting would happen, and that's per the letter you received from the mayor today.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So, Phil, do you have a actual date when you suggest that these meetings take place? So, Councilman Markovich is clear as to when?
As far as the department head meeting, as long as it's after September 27th, you can choose what date is appropriate for the council.
But I'm not the president, but of course, I understand that, but it has to be adopted and passed by. And his question to you again was the fact of it not giving an opportunity to make any changes. So once it's presented to the council, he's saying he can't make any changes.
I would suggest, since the mayor has scheduled meetings with each council person, that if you have changes that you would like to see made, that you suggest those to him. This is, the way it's set up is the mayor proposes the budget to the council. That is what goes into the system, and then the council then can make changes at that point. But if you have changes you'd like to see happen, sit down with the mayor right now. He's setting meetings with each and every one of you, I believe.
Remove Ann Hubbard.
What's that?
Remove Ann.
Councilman, please.
No.
It has nothing to do with that.
It does. I have suggestions.
Just stick to the thing.
I, it is, I am sticking to it.
Mr. President.
Hold, hold, one at a time here. Let's just take it easy. Let Phil finish up, and then we'll continue, okay?
Well, that's pretty much all I have to say, so.
Okay, Phil, for the record, she's got a letter from me with our budget that we're requesting. Unless anybody here on this council wants to make change, this is what's being submitted to her, everything, our secretary, part-time, and so forth and that, and whatever has to be done. I don't care about her proposed thing. I do want to know in writing when these agreements were made and all these changes were made. We've been advertising for a second secretary, you know, we had somebody line up, but they took a position with the school city. I'm being told now that we never even had that position, so I want to know when that position was cut out. And we've had a secretary, just like if the mayor has a secretary and has health issues or whatever reason, you know, personal business, you've got to have a backup. And we're trying to hire a backup. They're being told that that position was cut out without even being notified.
So, Mr. President.
Councilman Markovich.
I'm telling you for the record, okay, that I've submitted our budget for 2020. I'll give you a copy, she has a copy, and I expect that to be in there unless some changes are made in writing.
That is on the record that you were submitting that budget.
I do expect from this proposed attachment here, Budget Form 1, budget, where these changes, we'll reduce budget when Debbie's position is determined. Reduce budget once Debbie's position, once Debbie's position, you know what, we still have to have a second. If you want to be recognized, ask to be recognized, please. Let's keep some order here, okay?
What does order have to do with it? You're not supposed to be talking.
Keep some order here, okay?
You want the vice president to take over.
Hey, you guys can take a poll, you want me to step down, and I'll continue. I'm just trying to help you guys out for the budget. That's all I'm trying to do.
Mr. President.
Nobody's saying anything. If you want to.
Mr. President.
I'll step down, Councilman Rakels, and you can take over, and I'll continue from the.
You don't know how that works?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I don't see where there's an argument. They're not asking us to pass a budget before we talk to the department heads. They're going to submit a proposed budget. Being, having to be underneath the tax caps, I doubt very highly they're going to give us a budget that's over the tax caps. So basically, we're going to be handed a budget that we can cut. Nothing stops us from cutting anything. And my point is, is you're submitting a council budget to her on what you, we all will, I guess we're all going to look at it and say, okay, this is what we need. I just don't see where there's an argument here. She's got a proposed hearing with the department heads. It's not going to be after we pass the budget.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I've got to ask a couple of things, just for clarification. When, Phil, when the budget comes on September 27th, is it published?
That's when it's published.
It has to be posted into the DLGF system, the proposed budget.
So you're going to publish the budget before we can react to it?
This is how it is done, in that the mayor submits a proposed budget. It has to be 10 days before the October 7th meeting that you are having, and then you then will have an opportunity to react to it and make changes to the budget.
Is it published on the 27th?
Yes, according to this letter.
To the DGL.
So that means, once it's published, we can't make changes?
No, that's not correct. You actually can make changes to the budget after it's published into DLGF, and then eventually, the final budget will also be posted into the DLGF system. All right.
But for a point of verification, though.
Yes, sir.
We can make changes. We cannot make additions. We can only make cuts. He's not telling you everything, okay?
I just said that.
Point of order.
I'm answering the questions that you're.
Point of order.
This is our budget, you know, you know, they want to make cuts later. What's going to happen is, each department, and we don't even have to have department meetings, because they're going to be handed a budget from the mayor and the controller. This is what it is. This is what you're going to live by, and that's what it is.
Can't wait the campaign.
And once it's published on the 27th, it's not going to be changed.
Mr. President.
Might be able to make some cuts, but they're not going to make no additions.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, thank you very much. I think it needs to be made clear that our city controller and our mayor have met with each of the departments. Is that correct, Phil?
Is continuing to meet with the department heads right now.
Thank you. I, I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that each department has been asked to make cuts where they can without jeopardizing the services to the city. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And we've all been hearing about the tax caps that are coming. Seventy-five percent of the residents of the state of Indiana voted for the tax caps. Their property taxes are going to go down. And as the result of that, we as a municipality are not going to receive the amount of money that we had gotten in the past. Is that correct?
Yes, we say tax caps, but it's actually the exempt debt is no longer exempt, but yes, that is accurate.
Okay, so, it just so happened that the State Board of Accounts came in to do their audit, as they do every year, and it happens that the State Board of Accounts came here right in the midst of Heather working on the, the budget and, and meeting with all of the departments, and there are overlapping deadlines. Is that correct?
Unfortunately, it is correct, yes.
Okay, so, I think common sense would tell one that one can accomplish only so much. There is a State Board of Accounts deadline, there is a budget deadline. And Heather and the mayor are doing their very best to meet with everybody to make sure that our goals as a city, our financial goals are accomplished. I, I don't envy Heather. She has got a monumental job, and having the State Board of Accounts breathing down your back every day, and when they ask for something, they want it immediately. So all of that is playing into Heather working on the budget. So, that being said, that our budgets are going to be reduced. That goes without saying. Our department budgets are going to be reduced. Is that accurate?
Pretty much across the board, that is accurate.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Mr. President.
So, by state law, and, and correct me if I'm wrong again, we as the council would have the ability to reduce that budget. We would not be able to add to it once it has been published. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, all that being said, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to why there is an issue before us with regard to the 2020 budget. We all know that it is what it is. We all know that we have to make the reductions in order to keep our police and fire on the street, in order to maintain the services that we have for our residents at a reduced cost. So, all that being said, again, I don't understand why we're having a discussion about the budget once it's published, because we're not going to ask for more. If anything, we're going to ask for less. And quite frankly, when our city council budget is being presented with zero cuts, why is it, for years, I've heard about precedent, oh, there's precedent. Well, precedent happens to be a very convenient thing when it works for those who are, are proposing it. So, we have set a precedent before, and I think we need to lead by example. If other departments, and, and if all departments are being asked to reduce their budget, I think that the Hammond City Council needs to lead by example and reduce our budget. We get a very nice sum for our promotional money. Granted, that promotional money is used to support a lot of the athletic teams and the not-for-profits that are here in the city, and they come to us and they ask us for support. The Hispanic Parade coming up has come to all of us and asked for support. They wouldn't be able to put these events on without each and every one of us supporting them. So, I think we should lead by example. If everybody else has to cut, I think we need to cut as well. And I think we need to keep in mind what is going on with the scheduling between the State Board of Accounts and the deadlines that are imposed by the state for our budget. Thank you very much.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be posed to Councilwoman Vines. Are you willing to cut that $25,000 you get? Anyway, however, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. The reality of it is, is that we understand that the caps are here, and they've been coming, okay? There are needs and wants in each department, and we are aware of that as well. However, what suggestions do you have in regards to the cuts? I haven't heard anyone say, let's cut one thing. All they're saying is that the department here is going to present the budget to the council, but I haven't heard anyone publicly come out and say, I would like to see this cut, I would like that to be cut. So, I mean, I'm kind of confused.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Thank you. I just want to finish what I started earlier. Thank you for the information about publishing and being able to make changes. I have some difficulty, I, I understand we're getting meetings with the mayor to talk about the budget, but it's just difficult to speak to a budget that is supposed to be proposed another $5 million more in the hole without seeing it in front of you to have a conversation, to see where the cuts are made, to see if you agree with the cuts that are made, or where you're going to make your other options available. So I don't know how to have a conversation with the mayor if I have the budget in hand. It's just difficult. If I don't have the budget in my hand, how, how are, how are we going to talk about moving things around?
Councilman Kalwinski, I would agree with you, which is why Heather Gray is currently meeting with all the departments. She's going through the budgets with each individual department, talking to them about where they believe they can cut and how they can cut, and still maintain the services that we provide. And for Heather and the department heads to come in front of the council and say, here's what we're proposing to you, it can't be done until those department head meetings are completed and each department has made the potential changes that they're going to make. So I agree with what you're saying, which is why we don't schedule that Saturday meeting until all the departments have had that opportunity to meet with Heather and make the changes that they're going to be proposing. So I think we're agreeing on what you're saying.
What I thought I heard earlier was council people are meeting with the mayor. What I thought I heard earlier was council people are meeting with the mayor about the budget.
That's correct. So, the mayor is scheduling meetings, and I, obviously, he would do a better job of talking to you about what he's trying to accomplish than I can right now. But the mayor is scheduling meetings with each council person to talk about the big picture, which is that we have a projected minimum $5 million loss this year compared to last year's budget. And I think, once you meet with him, you're going to find that he's come up with some creative and good ways of cutting back on the budget and still maintaining the services and everything that we do for the city of Hammond, and still having funding for each district council person, as far as what they receive that they're going to be able to use for their district. So, I believe that's why the mayor wants to have that conversation with each council person. And at that time, if there's something you want to suggest to the mayor as far as compared to last year's budget, as to what you think could happen this year, I think that'd be a great opportunity to tell Mayor McDermott exactly what you're thinking and what proposed changes that you have in mind.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hicks.
Phil, you can tell the mayor I'm all in.
Thank you, Councilman Hicks. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
I think what Councilman Kowinski's bringing out here is, we always had department head meetings, and let's not play games here. The department heads could be given a budget. This is what it is. This is where we're going to make the cuts, and you've got to live with it.
End of story.
The only problem is this time, they're going to submit the proposed budget on the 27th. We're not even going to have department head meetings, okay, with the council or anything like that. And if we do, it's a mute point, because it's done and over with. You keep saying to make the cuts. The only thing the council's going to be able to do then is make cuts and no increases. And I don't think this council's planning on making any increases. The mayor's going to have his budget, and I'm sure the council's going to go along with it, you know, with the explanations and need to be done. I mean, that's the way it is, you know. But some of the processes are being cut out this time. And all I'm trying to do is protect the council, city council's budget for next year. And I've done that, as far as I can tell tonight by the letter. I've given it to the clerk. It's a matter of record. It's going to be submitted, and have him send it to the city comptroller. And again, like I'm reiterating, not to repeat myself, if anybody on this council wants to make changes, submit it in writing.
Mr. President.
Let me finish, please. And that's all we're at, okay? And if they want to have meetings, that's fine, you know, whatever. But the bottom line is, whatever that budget's going to be, we're not going to be met, we're not going to be meeting with the council. The 27th, that budget's submitted, and that's what it is, come like it or not.
President Markovich, I would suggest that Heather, when she meets with the department heads, that she does not tell them what they are going to cut. She works together with them as far as what cuts can be made for that department on behalf of the city. And I think you could ask each and every department head that, and you'll find that out, that she is not dictating to them what they have to do. She's working with them as far as what cuts can be made. And if you're concerned about what increases can happen in certain departments, I would suggest you talk to the mayor right now, so that you can give them those suggestions. But yeah, I would say that with a projected $5 million minimum loss compared to last year's budget, there's going to be quite a few cuts in different departments, in different areas. And, but at the same time, I think when the mayor meets with each council person, that they will be potentially pleasantly surprised as far as some of the creativity that we've come up with, and how we're going to be able to do this without interrupting the services and programs and things that we're doing for the city of Hammond.
I'm sure it'll be done that way. I'm sure it'll be done that way. It's just that the process and timelines are being changed as time goes on. And that's all that's being discussed, basically, okay?
I-
Things are put in writing, if and when and where, when we're going to have the meetings, when it has to be proposed, you know, the budget has to be proposed on October 7th, and that's Monday, October 21st, the adoption of the budget. So, I mean, that's all fine and dandy. But the bottom line is that the mayor and Heather and everybody's working with the department, and they're going to do what they needed, except for whatever's required for the union contracts, and there's nothing we can do about that.
Mr. President.
Where it's at. Councilman Hicks.
I guess my question would be to you. For 2020, do you have, in the proposed budget for the council, a second secretarial position?
Councilman, you received a letter. It's in there. If you read the letter, it's in there, okay? That's what it's all in there. There is a second position in there, okay? This is what's being proposed. And that's, again, I'm going to have the clerk submit that to the comptroller tonight. That's what it is. She got a copy of that letter. Again, if I need to repeat myself, if this council wants to make changes or cuts to our budget, you're welcome to do that. But I'm just trying to protect this council for next year, and whatever happens after that, to run this office efficiently, have everything covered. We need more than one person in there.
I agree totally. I'm willing to picket for that. You want to picket?
Any other discussion? New unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. Laura Gilliam, 7550 McCook Avenue, no parking signs and cement slab.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Laura Gilliam, 7550 McCook in Hammond. I'm across the yard on the corner of Conkey and Jefferson. I work at Wallace Elementary. The parents will park on the left-hand side of Conkey and block vision for me to cross the kids across Conkey. Principal has been out there. She's seen it. I don't have the authority either than the principal, because it's across the street from Jefferson Science School property, to tell them they got to move. I request that I inbox, Mr. Hicks, can I get no parking signs? You know, just on the corner, I have a picture. There would just be one or two. They pull up in this driveway. They park the other way too. You can see this big old truck. It'll block more vision. So, can I please have no parking signs?
Cut to the chase. I suggest you talk to Phil, Chief of Staff. It is a safety issue. It should be brought before the public works in safety. I can agree to her. I have the same problem with Clark, that they park and you can't see.
Thank you.
They need parkings, no parkings, so people can see that they make the-
Point of order.
-agree with you then.
You know, I mean, somebody's definitely going to get hit there. And it could be me. It could be the kids. And there's going to be an accident there. I don't know, but far as I understand is that if you're on a one-way street on Jefferson, and it's got two lanes, if you're in the right-hand lane, you're supposed to turn right, correct? If you're in the left-hand lane, you're supposed to turn left, correct? They turn left in the right-hand lane. They turn left in the left, I mean, right in the left-hand lane. Somebody asked me, can they put arrows paint on this, on the street?
That's the third district.
Right there.
Ma'am, we can't respond to you because-
Point of order.
Point of order.
This is public expression.
Yeah, I've sat here with my two girls, brought them to a meeting and listened to you, constantly interrupt people. So, I'm asking for a couple more minutes, please. This is not the safety of me. I don't care if a car hits me. But I'm not going to allow the kids that I cross to get hit by stupid drivers off of Conkey. That's my opinion. And I've told this to even the parents. He asked me, do they want to start a petition? I can do that too. How many kids, how many parents, how many kids go to Wallace Elementary? Anybody in this building? No. When I say, what, five, 700? I can get that many signatures. Now, personally, when I worked by Morena Elementary School, and I wanted to turn this street into one-way, I got a hold of the councilmen. I didn't have to come to a meeting.
Ma'am, we have a limit of three minutes for-
And this-
We thank you. We thank you for your time here.
The kids have fell, fallen. Please, well, no, I'm going to go. It's embarrassing.
Next person is Kendall Warner.
If you want to come outside, I'd appreciate it.
Again, when you have public expression, you have a limit of three minutes. Some people don't know about the rules. We try to accommodate, try to answer your questions in advance. Sometimes trying to, and I concur with the other council members, not to be getting in dialogue, but just trying to cut through the chase. Mr. Warner.
Yes, my name is Kendall Warner. I have a proposal here. I would like to read to y'all that I am going to submit to the city. It's called Who Got Beef Battlefields: Proposal for Battlefields and Arenas. This proposal is specifically designed to be able to bring a peaceful resolution to the various forms of conflicts and violence that plague today's society, and specifically the 3rd District community in Hammond, Indiana. I'm a conflict resolution consultant because I am a concerned citizen in my community. Unfortunately, I have been a resident of this 3rd District community for the past 36 years. And I also have friends and family members who has resided in this community practically all of their lives. Therefore, it compels me even more so to be concerned with the way things are ran and structured in our community. As a concerned citizen, I have been trying to aid and assist different individuals in my community with whatever they're doing to better our community, especially on a social, political, educational, and economical level, where it concerns the youth in our community. For the past few years, I have watched people who doesn't reside in our community come here and make all sorts of suggestions on who, what, when, where, and why, and how we should move and operate around here in the 3rd District of our community. Those sort of people are the very same corrupt people who keeps the division between us solely for the purpose of their own entertainment, capitalization, and manipulation over our community. You want our financial support in your businesses, churches, and social gatherings, only to make your homes and parks in your communities look better than ours. However, thanks to our 3rd District Councilman Anthony Hicks, along with teamwork of Mayor McDermott, we're about to have a new MLK Memorial Park. Congratulations, gentlemen. Nevertheless, we have two more parks here in the 3rd District that needs to be re-erected, reconstructed, and utilized as well, which is the purpose of this proposal. This proposal is for the mirror of the city of Hammond and Hammond's border parks. Let's stop the violence and make peace, not war, and a safe life for everyone. Due to the fact that Memorial Park no longer serves its original purpose of being a baseball little league field, and it has outlived its design, I suggested to the mirror to use it as a source of income for the city by turning it into a paintball arena all year round, especially since it has its own concession booth, lights, and for night games, there's plenty of other space. It would bring revenue and jobs to the city from all four corners. Plus, it could be resourceful for those individuals or groups of individuals to release their anger and frustrations or tensions out within this controlled environment. It's designed to take the violence out of the streets. Who Got Beef Battlefields and Arena, respectfully submitted to the city of Hammond, Indiana. You know, I done sat here many times, and I done watched and listened to all y'all bicker and complain and have different disagreements and beefs with each other. For what? Some of it don't even make no sense to me. You know what I'm saying? But, I mean, that's, I guess, the way y'all have this structured, that it's constantly got to be some type of disagreement on something. If we continue to go along with this in society like this, constantly beefing over nonsense, this is why you seeing people getting shot and killed in their workplaces, and schools, and things of that nature.
Mr. Warner, I appreciate your time.
Y'all have to be easy.
Thank you. Next person is George Stoy, Robertsdale.
George Stoy. First of all, I'd like to thank this council for something of a robust discussion. I know the, some people have concerns about the differences of opinion and the, let's call it the vociferousness in which they're presented. But I like it. I like the dynamic. I think different perspectives allow us to add them and synthesize them, reconcile contradictions, et cetera. I hope there's more, as opposed to what goes on in the back room all the time. Anyway, I'd like to thank Phil for his perspectives and his candor. That was nice, too. That way, we had a good interaction. I thought we did. Also, secondly, I'd like to thank Bernie, or congratulate Bernie, rather, and thank this council for making a choice. I think you're going to be in some hot water with Ramundo. But, you know, we'll see. But I just, you know, I wonder, one, is the appointment of Bernie retroactive to June 20, June 24th, from the point of time when you rescinded Ramundo's? And it's going to be interesting to see whether or not Ramundo, given all, I mean, Ramundo, if Bernie, given all the irons he has in the fire, can actually find some time to adequately represent the city, or I mean, the council, before that august body known as the Tourism Board. I mean, there's some serious stuff going on there. And we wouldn't want him to, you know, dilute his representation. And speaking of representation, please inform Mr. Bernie that contrary to what Tom Daberton, the city's representative to the Tourism Board, boasted on the radio that he was primarily the representative, not of the city of Hammond. Oh, no, no, not Tom. He's primarily the representative of the Tourism Board, and secondarily, the representative of the city. So, it makes me wonder, if that's the case with Bernie too, then on what grounds would the city be, could the city be damaged for any sort of bad representation or any representation at all? Because if we're just important guys that suddenly lose their fiduciary responsibilities as well as their advocacy is primarily for the Tourism Board and not the city, it's kind of a weird situation. And he said, no less. Nine lawyers told him that. How about that? If you buy that, I got a bridge, you know, that bridge that the guy just went to prison for trying to sell and take it apart? I'll sell it to you, okay? Lastly, with respect to the Spiro case, I call it the Spiro case. We all know what I'm talking about. What troubles me more is not just the cost, but let's say hypothetically that the city council or in the city, whatever wins. Does that mean that Spiro's going to drop appeal? Or conversely, what if Spiro wins? Does that mean the city's going to drop, drop an appeal? And this could go back and forth, all the way up to maybe the Supreme Court over the Tourism Board. And I'm sorry, we're talking some serious legal fees there.
Thank you very much, George.
So, quick three minutes.
Linda Egwiano, 3752 173rd Street, Hammond.
Okay, hello, everybody. Thank you for allowing this three minutes of expression. As you know, I've been up here before, talking about resolutions or the self-injury support group that I'm volunteer for. Today, I have three things I would like to address. And I really wish it was like Gary, where you get an answer. And they allow discussion before they vote on issues. But also, I was there once, and the meeting was three and a half hours long. So, it's a give and take with everything, right? So, first of all, I would like to thank Scott Rakos for his involvement in Hammond, and especially my district in Hessville, with the Latino Hispanic Parade, and for his support of hugs. And I'd also like to thank Pete Torres for his support of different activities that I'm engaged in as a volunteer with the Latino community. And encourage everyone to come out to not only our parade on Saturday, the 21st, but also Nishikago for the 15th. This segues into Mr. Ramundo Garcia, my second comment. And as a Latina, I'm very, very disappointed. I've been unable to get accurate data on the number of Latinos in Hammond. In the last census, which was, you know, almost 10 years ago, it was 35 percent. Latinos are also the youngest and the fastest-growing population. And, you know, we have one Latino on the council, no Latinas. And in most of the positions, whether they're appointed or elected, and Mr. Markovich, I would really appreciate your attention while I'm talking.
I'm listening to you. So is every other councilman.
I wasn't talking about every other councilman.
I'm listening to you.
So, what I would like to see is more encouragement of females and Latinos. I'm also very grateful that Hessville Park has this new, pretty significant financial investment. And when I drive by, I see a lot of little kids in the splash pad, and a lot of boys on the skate park. And yes, a girl can choose to skateboard and be involved with that. But at this point in history, skateboarding is primarily a male activity. You've got little boys, big boys, and adults out there. And we have one not too far away in Highland. I would just like the members of this city council- I would just like the members of this city council to think about the females, and by not including a big activity, without being sexist, what you choose tells girls whether they're important or not, and tells Latinos whether they're important or not to you. And that'll be reflected in the election.
Ooh, good luck.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn from this meeting.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, seconded by Councilman Spitali. All in favor, signify by saying aye.